You have another stretch. Pretty much. So, Pat, there's more to pave two roads, so I'll tell you about that when I get to. I'm gonna get started. Meeting to order, we'll stamp that's Regent's. What's a Regent's to fight? To the Republic, Regent's stands. The scroll.
Here.
Down the hill.
Here.
By the way. Here. Half of the ground.
Here.
Half of the wood. First thing I have here is a resolution to approve payment of the claims. You want to do this?
Can you do that?
Yes.
Doug will second entirely. Either one. Go ahead. Resolution to approve payment of the claims for the June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting for abstract six in the general fund is ten thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. And the total of abstract six in the highway fund is twenty-four thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. For a total of thirty-four thousand eight hundred dollars and thirty-nine cents. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next resolution I have is for a budget adjustment. To move my tax collector contractual to the historian. Anyone wanna bring that to the floor? Doug? Second? Charlie? The historian has wanted to put on some additional funding event, some additional events. She did an historical slideshow that a lot of people enjoyed. Saturday is the Victorian lady that she has coming, and she wants to do another slideshow and a few other things. But she's starting to run low. Contract was pretty small. And there is one thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents left in tax collectors contractual. And she's done for the year and won't need it. So, I'd like your permission to reallocate that over to the historian's contractual so she can have funding for her future events. Any discussion? Nope?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next resolution is for an additional seven hundred and twenty-four dollars that we need in the unallocated insurance to prevent it from going into the negative for a couple extra charges from the equipment being added to the insurance. So, I just need someone to bring that.
Yeah.
Doug? Okay. Second?
Aye.
Ed? Whereas there's a need for seven hundred and twenty-four dollars additional funding in the unallocated insurance code to prevent a negative balance, we had resolved the town board approves the following budget adjustment. We're going to increase the interest earnings in the general fund and increase the unallocated insurance to cover the seven hundred and twenty-four dollars. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. The next resolution relates to the highway for the paving that they wanna do this year. So, I just need someone to bring that to the floor. Ed? Okay. In a second? Charlie? In your packet are two quotes for Peckham. Highway department wants to do River Road and Garnet Lake Road. The total cost will be three hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-two cents. His total chips allowance for the year is three hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents. So, in order to complete the two roads, he's gonna need an additional ninety thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-three cents. And that would come from the highway fund bank account instead of trying to move it from any other expenditure. From the highway fund. Do you have any discussion? Nope? Okay. It's going to be two and a half inches. That's the depth, so he said it should last quite a while. Pretty good. I guess, I don't know much about it, but this includes the crew, the skid steers and the equipment and everything. All in favor, say aye. The next resolution is regarding the cemetery workers. I just need someone to bring that to the floor. You do it. Ed? Okay. In a second? Charlie? The cemetery worker has requested that his mileage reimbursement be paid to him on a weekly basis instead of at each meeting. There's, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. It's up to the board. So, I just wanna know where your thoughts on us giving him the check weekly instead of waiting to do it once a month? It's the IRS rate, I think it's sixty-something cents. Yeah. Yeah. He's using his own truck. He does put a thermos sign on his truck when he drives it. Yeah, I know. I thought. I know, I get a lot of compliments on it. People call. He does his whole field before.
It looks good.
Yeah? Okay. You're okay, Ed? Okay. So, whereas the town board agrees that the mileage reimbursement can be done with his weekly paycheck, resolve that the mileage reimbursement for Scott can be included with his weekly pay. Okay? Oh, yeah, sure.
I definitely feel he needs to have this money and in a way that you guys agree and he agrees is okay. But with his paycheck, I wouldn't wanna see him have to pay taxes on this money.
Oh, it's a separate, it's a separate check? It doesn't have taxes taken on it? It's just gonna be with his paycheck, like he'll get both at once? Yeah. Oh, yeah, no, it's not considered. Yeah. No, I see what you're saying. The way I worded it was with his paycheck, but it won't be included in his paycheck. It'll be separate check. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
The next resolution I'd really like to have everyone in the audience's involvement with. It's a resolution to introduce the local law and provide for public notice and hearing on a noise control local law. Does someone bring that to the floor so we can discuss it? Second? Doug?
Doug is okay.
In a second? Charlie? So, this is coming about because mostly we need one, and what happened over the more weekend, we had no control to stop or cease or do anything about. So, if you, I don't know if you have packets, you can pick it up. I have it written there, but I can read it if you want. This is going to require a public hearing. It's going to require community input. And we don't have a date for the public hearing. We'd have to set that based on what happens here today. So, what I wanted to do is just read this to you, and at any time, raise your hand and let me know if you wanted to discuss any section of it. Article one is the title, "The law shall be known as the Town of Thurman Noise Control Local Law." Article two is the definition, so in the future here, local law means the Town of Thurman Noise Control Local Law. Person shall mean any individual, group of individuals, or any other legal entity whatsoever. Unnecessary noise shall mean any excessive or unusual loud sound or any sound which either annoys, disturbs, injures, or dangers the comfort, health, safety, or peace of quiet of the community or any resident thereof. It's pretty brief. The policy says it is the policy of the Town of Thurman to prevent excessive unnecessary or unusually loud noise. The provisions and prohibitions contained hereafter and effective are in pursuance of and for the purpose of preserving, protecting, and promoting the public health, comfort, convenience, safety, welfare, prosperity, and the peace and quiet of the Town of Thurman and its inhabitants. It says no person shall make, continue, or cause to be made any excessive noise as defined above between the hours of ten PM to seven AM of the following day. Standards to be considered in determining whether unnecessary noise exists include, include but are not limited to the volume of the noise, the volume and intensity of the background noise if any, the proximity of the noise to residential sleeping facilities, the time of day or night the noise occurs, the time duration of the noise, and then under Article four, penalties and compliance, any person found guilty of violating any of the provisions of this local law shall be guilty of violation and upon conviction shall be punishable by a fine of, and I left that blank, for the first violation and blank for each violation thereafter. We do have someone who's interested in being a code enforcer, and I just really wanna know what your thoughts are.
I think it needs to be more descriptive. Your, your, you know, your definition of excessive noise may not be the same in law.
Okay. What kind of things would you like to see added?
There's gotta be a decibel level.
Okay.
So, that's a level apparently doesn't matter. Because if there's bass music, you know, lots of bass, you know, showing you heard that's two miles away, right? They could still be beneath the level that's acceptable. But if you live in close proximity, you're still gonna hear that, especially it's like binary music, because that's a little different. It's very deep.
Okay.
So, also living in a rural area, do you?
Yeah.
So, things echo. So, you get people that come from the city and they're not used to quiet. So, most of us that live here are, and they don't even recognize that they're loud. You know? So, I don't know.
But again, there's, there's, loud is a, you know, big, it's a term. That's all I'm saying. If you set a decibel level and at the same time give them a research, there's gotta be a way to measure the sound of the bass. Maybe the terminology, decibel isn't correct, but there's gotta be a way. When, when these contropoles are set up and they regulate the music so that you get the correct sound that the band is looking for, there's gotta, you know, through the soundboard, there's gotta be a way to measure that.
Well, that's true, and that stuff is, but in a rural area, that I think is a little different. Also, going back to what you said, the police were there all weekend on our, in the decibel. And even when they were within a rural border, you are a hole, so you're about, your whole body is. So, I don't know. My law on that would be is reasonable. Most people are reasonable. You know, my neighbors have a party.
But that's not legally. That's not reasonable, again, reasonable is, it's too abstract. Again, your reasonable and my reasonable could be miles apart.
Right. Now, there is, all of this was information that I gathered on short-term rentals, and I've read through all of this. And there is one town that set decibel levels, four different decibel levels. So, if you were at fifty-five at a certain time of night, because what they were having is under nine, was ninety-something, that's where your hearing starts to be injured. I think it was ninety-five. And so, that's one of the things that I did read for four different levels. So, you could say no higher than a decibel level of fifty-five at night, or, you know, however you wanna word it.
Right.
But you could have it so that they could come and, and do a check and be able to say, oh, no, it's fifty-five at this hour. You can't be all that. So, that might solve that. Right. Okay. Yeah, you're right. Keith?
I didn't actually hear anything, I think I'm like a mile and two tenths away up on Brandon. I saw on the internet, I was just watching it on a pole, and I was, you know, very furious. You know, people were being told by the property owner who rented the property, if you don't like it, you can leave for two days and I'm having my property rented. I'm sorry. That made me so mad of you. And I said, you know, for anybody that have to live through that kind of nonsense, to me, it's just appalling. You know, it shouldn't happen. They shouldn't be told that. I was told also, I can't remember who told me this, but that the property owner could rent that house out for twenty people. And it was in excess of a couple hundred there.
Well, that's my next open law, but right now, I'm just dealing with the noise.
Well, we're gonna gather all that information. I, I, you know, you're gonna miss them, you know.
Well, the house can only have twenty-two people or twenty people. Doesn't mean the property can't, they have a proper sanitation, but the outhouse or whatever.
Well, once, once you know you're doing outhouses and a lot of people, doesn't that way they have become commercial?
Yeah.
It's commercial anyway.
But right now, the problem that we have is we have no. Now, that's her private, that's her primary residence. Well, that is her primary residence. So, it's a personal.
Since they have to pay a dead tax.
They should.
They do. Don't they?
If you would like to tell the answer that you, I think that's public knowledge. I don't know if I should answer that or not, but if you know the answer to that.
No, she, that is her, I spoke with Kevin Garrity in Warrens, from Warrensburg. He's, you know, I saw him at a county meeting, and he said no. Her personal residence is the house on high street.
But she has to be there a hundred and eighty days out of the year to be a former resident. Right now.
I know.
But there's no way that, like.
How do we prove that?
I mean, you just can't, I know because I live there.
Yeah.
I know because I see what's going on, and I know they don't live there.
And she's looking for.
So.
So, a quick way around that, a little devious, but if it is a VRVO, you can go on and find out how many days are available where people aren't staying there, make the assumption that the days she has it, they're the days that they're living there. It doesn't add up to a hundred and eighty.
That would be a little tricky because as a vacation rental owner, you can also offset, you know, you don't have to, like, you're being, you know, you're.
Right, right.
Right.
So, you don't necessarily have to watch the calendar, you know, so that might be.
Right. Well, I'm saying, if it's, if it's not blocked, I mean, even if she's renting from a different site, she then has to block that out because otherwise you double book it. I'll be sure I have.
I've seen times where it's not blocked and people show up, so that's why I was.
But then, that, if it's not blocked and people are showing up, then maybe that's for staying. That's my point.
No, because we guys stay in there.
Okay. That property is registered as an Airbnb county, like a paper from the county that tells me who's registered and who's not. So, she, they are registered under both their names for that property as an Airbnb, but that rental that occurred was private. It was not done through Airbnb.
But that's okay. It's a rental property, no matter how she brings it.
Right.
What does the town tell you that Airbnb, nineteen? Property in Thurman or Airbnb?
Um, there's about, there's at least forty that we know of.
The county says nineteen.
None of the other places have that tax, but they'll have every time.
Don't they?
So, now I make a sure you're, that I thought it all happened.
And, and the other one itself is getting more strict. Because if you don't pay the tax, they may collect it for you. So, they're getting a lot more strict.
There's thirty, but they have one, two, three, four.
See, they are registered.
They have eight people, but they won't, they're probably on now. This is what I got.
Our list says thirty.
Yeah.
Well, I was like this morning, the county says nineteen.
No. This list is very, very.
I'm sure there's ways, or I think the.
Well, he hasn't, we got, Mike Vaughn sent me this, and it says registered, yes or no?
Well, I just talked to him this morning, and he said nineteen or registered.
But you have to be careful about the ones that have a Warrensburg address.
Half of them got Warrensburg address. Delaware, homegrown, South Town Road, they're all listed on the Warrensburg. That would come under Thurman, still town of Thurman.
The county, what the, what the Thurman's saying thirty, the county's saying nineteen, there's more than what's being counted?
Yeah. Okay, so, so far for the noise, we need to have decibel levels and distance from the source of the noise.
Is there a way to, is there a way to measure the base decibel or?
I don't know much about that.
So, they brought their own, they had before, they had brought this own decibel, really well-measured devices, whatever you would call them. But the movies that they're there, we can of course have them. So, it was, it was measured continually, you know? I forgot what he said, I'm sorry.
I was just wondering, when you say decibels and bass isn't really a high pitch.
Right.
It's a convertible. Yeah. There's gotta be a way to measure that, to put a stipulation on that measure.
Yeah.
What's really sad in all of this, since I've been a vacation rental for ten years, I had walls. She says she does too, but not with Forsen. And we have somebody who doesn't care, like, if he doesn't care, it's called, it's, 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 it's never happened because I'm on my.
Then that's where your hearing starts to.
It's one of the older ones who care, you know? I think we, we don't seem to have that. You know, most people, like, if somebody, they haven't been, so, you know, gastric problems, I was trying to sleep, I would be, you know, a person sorry. They'll take care of it, like, I shut the music off. Most people act like that. Many, a lot of people are concerned with their local people, like, you know, local people that have farms that is built at that. But honestly, I don't know any local people that have turned other local people in and murdered farms, you know? Because we all know it's like, just a random event, and it was bothering you, you're like, hey, it's, you know, two of the ones, you guys just fly out. Most, most people are good. You know?
Well, that's the thing too, we don't wanna hurt the people who are doing it right. We just wanna.
Well, I understand that. There's gotta be, like I said, there's gotta be.
Some type of measure.
Weight measure to the base.
I'm looking for that where I saw those rates in here. I know one of them was fifty-five, and then they went up to ninety-five, so.
Right, but the question is, what is that measure? What type of sound is that measure?
Yeah, that I have to find it.
Yeah, there's gotta be a weight measure because I'm running through a soundboard, you know, and you're adjusting for the, for the tone and the balance. So, there's gotta be a weight measure.
I know, who would, who would do that? And what's how much of a device like that would be where maybe an easier thing, something like.
Well, when I'm shaking the windows and the outside doors, it's too much pain.
You know, I think if you're bothering somebody and it's between whatever time slot we pick.
You should be a kind person and try to.
Yeah, you should get a warning and just be asked to and, you know.
Also, then, I don't know if you can single out the VRVOs because they're, that's the one that's still really, where the problem's gonna probably be. Other than, you know, not too many residents have parties like that.
Right. They don't.
Can you, is it a possibility that you can stipulate the VRVO owners that they have to enforce?
You can't discriminate that way in any way. I've looked into that too, and it has to be, especially in noise ordinance, has to be for the entire town. You can't, like, we could make sure.
There's only ones that have to go by the guidelines, everybody has to go by the guidelines.
Right.
But they should be somewhere accountable.
Right. They're accountable, like, they're the ones that are gonna get fined. The owner, the owner of the property will get fined, not the person saying it.
Right, I understand.
Right, so that's how, that's it.
If she had booked that through the RDO and they had gotten any complaints, the RDO has a policy that they enacted a few years ago that if you're rental, gets complaints from neighbors, local year listing, but she can book that through the RDO, so that doesn't matter anyhow. Just so the owner is kind of aware.
Exactly, that is a product booking, yeah.
Well, here's some, if you want, we can skip to the, you know, we can set that aside and skip to the short-term rental section of this because it may apply, it'll only apply to short-term rentals, whereas a noise ordinance has to be the whole town. But with the short-term rentals, you have a lot more ability to have different regulations. And one of the things that's concerning me, and I'll just go through my list of notes, and you guys can tell me what you think. But today I found out that this, this house next to Circle Out Ranch just sold to the company that owns the red house down by the river there, and it's going to be a short-term rental, and it sold for eighty thousand dollars. Now, long-term view, what about the people living here? What about the people who maybe want their child to buy a house here in town? And these are gonna be bought up and short-term rental, and we'll be a town full of that.
It is already, well.
But is, yeah, but how can you say? Talking about discriminating, you can't say who's gonna buy, and that's up to.
No, but you can limit, and I'll go through my list here, but you can limit how many short-term rentals you allow in your town. You can say you can have forty, sixty, ten percent of the population, whatever.
And how do you deserve to do that?
Yeah, a lot of towns.
Because it is really an issue. I mean, I've been there for thirteen years, since COVID lifted, even the realtors are caddying in their sales, like, oh, you can have your.
Oh.
Most of the sales are heard to ask at downstate people or at state people. And so, it's appealing to them when the realtor says, well, you can now have it right here, here in vacation rental, and you can vacation rental for the rest of the year, okay?
Right.
Well, you know, you're working, so that's a good business move if you buy the right rental. It's a sort of business, and it's a serious problem. And now, the process of homes around here has gone to simplify, and it's actually great. Our kids cannot go buy a home and normally find places to rent because everything's really the vacation rental.
Right, well, I.
So, I, obviously, you know.
But my only question is, is there a precedent for that? I mean, again, I like the small town. But I'm just saying, is it, that was that one, let's say, okay? We got a thousand homes, I'm just reckoning, right?
Okay?
And we're gonna say ten percent can be. And we're gonna say ten percent can be, is there a precedent for that? Can someone come in and say, show me on the book, show me a law that says, I'm the eleven percent and I can't read on it, okay?
I've gone through, I've gone through all of this, and there's a lot of towns are doing that, they're counting it.
Just because they're doing it.
No, you can, it's a law, you can make it a law.
Okay, that's, that's all, that's all I'm asking, yes.
I don't think that the short-term rental is really driving the price of housing up, it's the fact that people were at home and they're moving out of the city and they're willing to pay more money.
Because it's so cheaper than that.
But the thing is, if you go to get real estate and look at how many homes are being sold for people to live here on an annual basis, as opposed to how many people are buying, they're turning into short-term rentals slash their own vacation home, that number so far over here, it's so far over here, it is an issue, there's been articles written on it. Well, yes, or, uh, like, add it on like a year ago, I mean, I didn't send it in, but it's such a question, if you want to talk clinical with issues, this is, and it's not, it's, it's not just in your state, it's in every state, and, and actually globally, this is an issue. And it, and it's much more serious than people think, like, we have kids that are soon gonna be able to buy homes and some that are, they can't afford it, when a, when a normal home in Lake George is going for four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, like, wow, come on. You know, I mean, they're priced out of the market.
So what's the overall consensus of, of all of you? Would you wanna see the number capped, a certain number?
I, no.
No.
E, Keith?
I would say yes.
Yes?
I would, I would like to see the, the cap, and I would, you know, I mean, if you, if you, if you can't stop, you can't say no to everything. But what has happened in this case is extreme. I mean, it's, it's okay to rent the house out to people that may wanna stay here and visit, like, they work there every night or, you know, for two weeks, that's okay, I, I can move with that. But in this particular case, it's really bad there.
Well, I'd like to spend other issues besides this, because there are no rules in force, I got shot at by a girl, because I'm probably getting fired all by myself, twice, by the same group of people.
And I've heard of it from other people that live in this town as well.
They've been through my old partner, not my, my teacher, and I've read a book on how, is there, you can call her, you can text her and say, hey, they're running more, we don't, she's working on two fields that they, you know, they broke the roof in the backyard, they stole my yard without the backyard, I mean, there are no rules there. The biggest problem that I have other than all of that is that, um, there are nights that we, over the years, we just can't sleep, you can't sleep. I mean, my parents lived in a little house next to the garage, and I go so back, and my parents on nights they couldn't sleep. You know, I don't think I have any other, this one, I just still listen to the music at four, you know, you're calling and texting, and there's no response, none.
This is what I'm saying to the board is, this is terrible, this is terrible, you know, you own property, you're paying taxes, not just you, we all.
The way around, I'm sorry, go ahead.
The way we all live here, and we're told we have to endure this or go leave.
The way, the way around that is a permit process, which most towns.
They will not have doors, get out of there.
Yeah, right.
Going back to the two houses you're talking about, I know those people pretty well, they, she's just done in real estate for thirty years, both of them houses that sat there five years, absolutely nobody looking at them. She turned this one around, it's a gorgeous house, now I don't know if there's gonna be gorgeous house, now you're telling someone like her that they shouldn't buy here because they need something for their home as well. That, that house might have sat there for another ten years rather quick.
Yep.
Can I say something? Are you from here?
Yes, I am.
Just curious.
Say.
Some of the why?
Because of the peace and quiet, I have the same problem too, I have people shooting, I live on the water, I have people coming down through my front door, they come on my back door and ask me if I can fish, that don't have a fishing pole. I know I'm allowed to shoot, I hear, I got a guy in town to the hill that shoots off two hundred rounds a month. That's, that should be part of the noise we draw.
I know, we're losing.
Can, can, can I start shooting right in my privacy? I don't know, gravity, I mean, is somebody gonna tell me I can't because decimals are too loud? Am I the way making money? I mean, if a gun range is better?
I think that's why we have a polite discussion.
We are having a fight.
It's, it's just that you wouldn't be shooting, you wouldn't think that you'd be shooting.
They shoot that. They should be. No, it wouldn't be, it's just a decimal.
You know, another good local law that they want in the future is banks can't let these houses sit so long before they sell them.
The guy shoots the day, and he's someone out.
But, 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 but.
It was on the market all the time, but it's a bank.
But, but, but.
But, but.
Somebody you reach certain in the middle of the day.
Well, right, so, but, but. So we got, we got, kind of, local laws, right? But that's a good question, gentlemen have a great question, so for the, the decibel level, right, if you're shooting a gun and it's loud, that decibel level wouldn't matter until the noise ordinance kicked in? Or is that decibel level twenty-four seven?
Everything those people would call and say anything about, remember, we are shooting guns, don't worry.
Don't be so sure. Okay, so, and the reason I'd say that was like myself, I'm from the city, I have a state, guns terrify me, I know this is funny, but I'm just saying, you can't have somebody that, there's a, we had a guy across the street that was shooting.
Yeah.
Yeah. During the day, that terrifies me, again, mind you, but, but if the noise level, if it was higher, would I have the right to call and complain about that?
No, because.
That's right.
I'm sorry?
What are you ignoring, huh? You're not shooting, you're not hunting about anything forty-seven. The next forty-seven, two, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
But, all, all, all my point is that the noise ordinance is gonna have to be careful because of things like this, right? That's all, that's all, that's, I didn't mean that.
So during the day, you can go above fifty-five, or that, that clock, and they have to go, they have to maintain fifty-five decimals.
Stop. Right, that would be.
Yeah, we could set it whatever, once I.
Yeah, whatever the hours are, I'm just saying, that would.
Well, if you look at this town, those of us in here, in eighty-five, the joke in town was, when it started, it was, it was, it was, it was, you know, go home to be well, there was shots more of them every day, and it's just the way it was, and it's got a lot better than it was.
You're not surprised if I'm saying.
We're not hoping that, like. You're not, you're not. So then the decibel level wouldn't kick in, the light, or noise ordinance, whether it's any level, whatever it's set, then that would be wrong.
Well, there are towns that have noise ordinance that are in effect all the time, I was in Glens Falls, my dogs were barking, police were called on me at my daughter's house, my dogs were barking in the house. So there are towns that have noise ordinance twenty-four seven.
For instance, towns, each house is on, a whole.
Yes, exactly, there's a driveway and then next neighbor, so, yeah.
The thing is, though, is when they're really loud, they're acros, it's when it's quiet, you know, the, 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 the mountains.
Yeah.
No, that, 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 that's a certain part, and I agree with that.
Right, and so if you'd like to live in here, you probably live here, percent of the season, that, most of us do, we like the peace and quiet, and we like to hear the young, also we like to know our neighbors, and you kind of have a sense of security, because you know what's going on. And the more vacation houses that come in, the more you're able to use the integrity of that type of living, and that's a fact, and it's becoming a problem.
You know, I have something to say, when you have vacation rentals, how could you stop somebody else from having vacation rentals? You're all here, you're all hundred percent, that vacation rental is known as, and it, and fine, I can see it, you, you know, it's, it's, you do, you.
No, I also don't think it's fair that you group those rentals in there, a lot of people come up here and give respect, and they come up here for the purpose of enjoying the quiet and the beauty and the serenity. Just because there may be a handful of renters, I, I just don't think it's fair, I mean, you all probably know better than I do, it just doesn't seem fair that if we had thirty rentals in our unit, in our, in our community, and we've only had a couple of instances based on percentages, then obviously it's none of the VRBOs.
There's certain places you store, um, three, one, two, three, four, five, basically, the setting system is only, you know, two bed halls.
Right. Right.
Well, you have to get towns, they store the setting rooms.
Yes.
But you say there's a whole, you have to have a setting system, it's spent every fall once a year, because this is everybody's wall, that's the other problem, we're running with the same wall system now.
Well, that's what the permit process is for.
And you saw, hurting them, they're hot.
Yeah.
That's when things change. Most of them, if you get a good, if you have one, it's, it's twice, gotta go to the owner, not the person sitting there.
The owner, the owner, it has to be.
And the ones that don't pay, like, the duals, not gonna pay any mortgage.
Well, let me just.
And then you gotta turn around and start building, building your house, and that's the only way you change the town.
But you've got, I don't know, how, this, how we, then, is that we're established for.
Exactly.
You've got six beds in a ten, okay? And then a lot of.
And then I won't have, I won't have, I won't have, I won't have a house across the street from, I'm not telling you, glad to have that for a year. She had twenty beds.
Yeah. Yeah.
And flowers, these are joined by, it's like, that's a, that's a.
Wow.
Yeah, so if you guys start, small, only little pieces.
It starts with the permit process, because when you.
Why, they don't have a permit in this part? Why not?
Because we don't have a permit, yeah, because I had, I got an email about why did I let him have a permit, and I never let it, I didn't even know about it till Friday night with the sheriff, like, we don't have a permit, yeah.
We have a permit. Look, the, the, there is, there is a, there is a, there is a committed system, so you have to have it, you have the cops, you have the drill station, you bring the officers in the morning.
If we make a local law, they can enforce it, as opposed to an ordinance, if we have a local law, they can come and enforce it. Now, someone I talked to did tell me that maybe we should have called the state police instead of the sheriff, but we don't have any laws, there, we were not prepared for this at all, and that's what we're just trying to fix. So, under the permits, these are some of the things I saw that people are requiring, information on all the property owners that are on the deed, assigned and notarized affidavits, certifying compliance with safety issues, which would be like, um, smoke detectors, um, you know. Amount of people per bedroom, safety inspection, a contact person who's available twenty-four seven and is no more than thirty minutes away, house number visible from the street, provisions for garbage removal. We have to think can or cannot be transferred to a new owner if the property sells. Um, denial for non-compliance, if they get enough complaints, they can lose their permit and not have the right to have that short-term rental anymore. The fines, um, the fines for violating local law, we can choose, according to the town law manual, the ones I saw were three hundred and fifty for the first offense, seven hundred for the second offense, third offense, you lose your permit. Um, other information that they would need to provide to the renters that they have, they would have to post the noise ordinance, the parking regulations, tre, information about trespassing on other people's property, which I know you've had issues with. Information on the ADK rules regarding private land, a lot of people come up here and they think they're in a park, they go anywhere, they don't realize this is privately owned land in a park. So that needs to be relayed to them, they need to post phone numbers for the fire department, EMS, health, safety. I think some people coming up here may not know just how difficult it is to fight a fire, it's not like they hook up to a fire, um, fire hydrant, they have to bring the water, they have to bring that big tank and go down and fill it down to Cameron Road or somewhere, and it's not easy to fight a fire here. Whether or not they have adequate homeowners insurance, you can have people up here that have no insurance on their property, it's paid off, now they're renting to people. Um, another thing I saw was contact information to all the property owners within a hundred feet of the rental, so that they know who to call if they're having an issue. Um, a law prohibiting offensive behavior, quiet hours between ten PM and seven AM. And, um, this is just some of the things that I've been seeing, um, requiring that they're registered with the county.
I mean, everything you just said should be included.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all very, it's all very reasonable and logical to, you know, to have, I think, I mean, I have a vacation rental, there's a lot, but I don't have a problem with any of that.
Well, here's just one more thing, should neighbors be notified and have an opportunity to weigh in and make public comment on whether or not the house should be able to be a short-term rental? Now, that might be more of a problem in a small, in a more congested area, we're pretty far apart, you know, Keith?
Um, I think neighbors might be able to have something to say, but in most cases, a short-term rental is not the problem.
Right.
The problem is somebody that occupies the apartment, that bring your legal drugs, changing the building, drugs, and all the neighbors, they don't like that they have, you know, you should leave.
Yeah.
That, that, you know, all that.
Well, they, they would have been violating this in quite a few levels, you know?
You know, we didn't see many outages there, and for, like, three or four days, they went to the bathroom, like, right above my property, so for like three, four days, I had toilet paper and stuff on, and every property, they were coming across the fence line.
I had a cop in town there.
Safety issues.
Safety.
It was disgusting, and it was, and I guess those people didn't know, in all fairness to them, the people that came to the event, although you think the fire and the whole fence would be an indicator that maybe you shouldn't.
Well, see, trespassing would be a violation, if we had this in place, that, all of that would have been a violation. And when you get the board of health involved, you know, and you have a rule and they're breaking it, we'd have a lot more ability to stop that. Now, I did consider even calling state emergency to get it out of here, you have illicit drugs being given out right there, so I don't see why they put this up.
Like I said, all this is a radical start, and it just needs to run over.
Right.
And it should be.
Another thing that they have, I'm, I'm sorry, but maintain guest records for at least two years, the day of the stay, the number of the guests or names and how much they're paid, they pay, not to us, but they should have to keep it in case something happens. You know who was there.
I do, but that's up to, I was gonna say, but that's up to the individual, I, I don't think you can mandate how somebody runs their business, because that's what you're saying, you're mandating how they run their business. That's up to them, if they choose to keep a record, I think the same thing, you should do, but I don't think it's up to the town to mandate how they run their business.
Well, yeah, I guess because you couldn't, you, as a town, we can't come up against a tenant, it would have to be the homeowner that we would have the issue with, you know, it, it can't be the tenant. But that was just one of the things I, I read in there, like, like I said, I went through all of that, I made notes on, on what I thought would work here, um, I went over most of it. The other thing, and that was my next resolution, was, um, most of these towns, in fact, pretty much all of them, did a temporary moratorium on short-term rent, rentals until their laws could take effect. Because it takes time, you have to put it in paper, you have to have a public hearing, everybody has to come and meet, then you have so many days, you have to send it to the state, then it comes back, and then it's a law. So what they did in the meantime was a temporary moratorium, which, um, which gives us time, it does not stop the people who are already renting, they can continue. Um, it could be for a three-month period, it could be extended twice for three more months, but I don't think it's gonna take us more than, more than, not, probably not even three months to come up with what we need here.
Um, but that, but then doesn't it take time to post and, post a notice, have the meeting of, that would take more than three months, right?
Right, right. So, um, I, I think we could do it in three months or less, because what happens, like, if today we decide on what we're gonna do, then Cynthia posts it in the newspaper, five days of the day hits the paper, we have a public hearing. After that, we vote, after that, it goes to the state, however long it takes them to get it back to us, stamp that it's a local law, then it takes effect, then we let Airbnb, the RBO, all that, no, we let them, and we let them know that we now have this permit process. So then they post it on their site whenever anyone in Thurman wants to use Airbnb or the RBO or whatever, they'll be told that you need the permit.
Oh, okay.
So that's how it works.
I think that's a great idea, I think there's, I think there's a lot of things that, you know, can be discussed and thought out, you know, so I.
So get ready for the public hearing, because that's when we're really gonna be going through this, you know? And, so let's say if what, I'm sorry, I, I won't forget, Keith, um, let's say with what happened, I mean, Glenda, you know, owns quite a few rentals. Let's say with what happened, I mean, Glenda, you know, owns quite a few rentals. What we would be doing, if we would pull a permit, it'd be a permit per rental, so she'd lose the permit on that property, not all her others.
Right.
That's how that would work, so it, it's fair in a way, because, you know, they could have done something, they were told.
Well, he, when he came in, the neighbors and I were all in the front of the garage at two in the morning, and he's like, what's going on? And so one neighbor said, you told us what's going on, but he is asleep. And he said, it's a wedding, they told us it was a wedding. And then we were trying to talk to him, like, can you please go tell them to turn it down? Because at that point, we realized that the police really couldn't do anything about it.
Yeah.
And he's, he was really snotty, and while we were talking, he just got away, he drove right by the one, drove right by it, and he could have went up there and made some requests to the event organizer. And for him to stop it, they chose not to, but that's a way they've held it for years. They don't have to stop any people shooting guns in the middle of the night or any of it, nothing, they don't care, they just don't care about the entirety of our neighborhood.
And that's why we're all here, that's why we're here, because most people, guys.
You know, this could happen next to any of you guys, they end up with a vacation, oh, doesn't care.
Now, the White House only has an acre or two, but everything else goes with the trailer, so if they use the land that goes with the trailer, it shouldn't have to be two minutes?
If the, yeah, well, is the trailer rented on a monthly basis to tenants, though? It's not a short.
There's two, uh, trailers, one is like closer.
Oh, there's two trailers?
And then there's one that's closer to the rooms to permits.
Yeah, it would be two permits, it would be a permit per rental property.
Per dwelling, because. Per dwelling or, or property?
Per dwelling, per, per, per unit that people are gonna stay.
Right, so per dwell.
Cuz they're all gonna have their own septic issue, they're all gonna have their own compliance issues.
How can you get the White House? White House has a. But you don't go to land.
Well, it's like seven, eight o'clock.
Seventy, seventy-eight. They split over the White House. Just, that, that doesn't matter, too, but, cuz when he runs out, he'd be saying, you haven't used access to seventy-eight.
That's what I'm saying, so should you two convince if they're using that land?
Yeah.
Because they had campers, the people were camping, now. It's, the event organizers are the ones that messed up and not having porta potties. If they're gonna have an event like that, they should have had a porta potty.
Well, they used a mat and a rug in the house.
Yeah, how many people were at the thing? A box.
I mean, I'm gonna lowball and say that there was at least anywhere from one fifty to one seventy-five, and that's a lowball, I guess, I'm just gonna say that as a safe bet.
Okay.
They didn't have time to get porta potties, they were supposed to be in Bruteville, they, and they, and then Old Forge, so I reached out to both those towns, and I said, well, how did you keep from having them there? And they have zoning, and they have a permit process, and, and, and they wouldn't, they didn't allow them to be there, and that's.
Was it because of the public outcry that they decided to move here?
And they waited until like three hours or two hours before they had to announce the address, and then.
They're not even said that.
And they protested. The next weekend, on their website, their webpage, or whatever, Facebook page, all, they were having, you know, the Dallas State, he has one every time, he's actually picked out a candidate and now about that, the event organizer. And he's scary, though, let me tell you, he's the only person I love, I have to shake his hand, we should have to shake my hand, and they offered me and my kids, so we could go stay in the motel for the kids. And then I offered him money for a plane ticket to go back to Florida for a week, but, um.
Good for you.
Yeah, well, I was really upset, it was a blast, sleep at that point, and my daughter couldn't even stay at home, but.
When I said, when I read your post, it was like, man.
Yeah, it was, I never would have driven anything like that in my, in my life, but I, the person wasn't there, so probably didn't want to shoot.
I'm surprised no one shot the transformer, because I know there were people that said to me, they had thoughts of shooting that transformer, and they could stop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And very unthoughtful of the neighbors, like, I really, I mean, I wasn't surprised, but I was surprised, because this time, it wasn't just me complaining, it was half the people within a two-mile radius, and still that many of them, and that's just so incredibly thoughtful and sensitive.
We heard it on Mud Street, I know Bear Pond, they heard back there, and it all depended, too, on, on the environment, you know, because sound carries in certain ways, yeah. But I could, I could hear from, from Mud Street, so.
Yeah, it's funny, because I could just barely hear that Paul Mogul is just over the hill, and it just comes up the valley. Yeah, just on the other side of the road, which is the valley all the way through, it just traveled up there, he said he had a heart on sleep.
It just ruined everyone's morning weekend.
It was a wonderful weekend, I had to leave a recital that I planned, I went to all the areas, I had to leave early, because, I had a tiger, cops coming through the cabin with the wires, and they were like, like, I was in Pennsylvania, they were living, we got there, they were so tired.
Did they leave?
And the last message they sent me was, so many people were peaceful, I had on that vacation, that was the last message I got, so I had to leave that recital early. Yeah, and then I had to leave another cookout to go deal with, with the people coming out of my property, I had a tour guide cabin, which was a vacation, well, because I guess we were looking for places to go to the bathroom, and I had young girls hanging out in front of the garage, you turn like indoors and the windows and mirrors, and dance in front of it, I couldn't care, you know? So, it was all reported, and we were like, what? What are we doing to the doors and windows?
Well, the two things I wanna walk away from this with today is the resolution to introduce a local law and provide for public notice and hearing for the moratorium of short-term rentals. I do think I, myself personally, would like to just stop it until we have rules. And it doesn't affect anyone who's already renting, it doesn't even stop what happened up there, I mean, but it will just stop it from, from getting more until we have some rules, because maybe we do wanna have a set number, or maybe that number is sixty, or a hundred, or, you know? We have about forty now. And I'll reach out to Mike Swan, because he's the one who sent me the list, so I think he might not be counting the Warrisburg addresses, I'm, I'm just gonna check on that, um, so.
With the noise ordinance, is that also a public hearing, or that's something?
That's a separate public hearing.
It is a separate one, okay.
We can do it at the same time.
Oh, okay.
But it's a separate law.
Okay.
So, cuz the noise ordinance will affect everyone in town.
Right.
And the short-term rental will only affect those, people short-term rentals, so.
But you can do them at the same meeting, is that how you wait a month to handle another?
No, I don't wanna wait a month, I, I really wanna push, push them through as quickly as I can. And not be, usually, we don't have an issue, we don't have issues, pretty much, I mean, not like. Well, because of who you're next to, that, and I think the permit process will take care of that, because she won't wanna lose that as a short-term rental. But I do think, you know, inspections are gonna have to be required, someone's gonna have to come in there, and they're gonna have to say, well, this septic is only good for this many people. And as far as all them tents and everything, I mean, I would like to, there are towns that say, no tents, no RVs, no glamping, none of that, and that's a little bit intrusive, because here, we have properties that have a lot of land, and there's no reason why you couldn't have a tent and not be a problem. You're not setting up tents in Glens Falls, you know, I mean, it's different here, so we have to make sure we design this for our area. So.
We're asking, we're wondering if they have enough sanitary porta potties.
Exactly. Yeah. A porta potty would not have covered that hundred and seventy people.
Yeah, because it has, you know, how many bathrooms are in that house?
I think there's four.
Really?
I think.
But a hundred and fifty people would.
Let's say bathrooms, that, that we, anybody that went over there, the police, other neighbors that went over there, I didn't go on the property myself to talk to them, but other people did, and everybody was looking for porta potties, so nobody saw anything.
Okay. That's, but that's the organizing problem, fault for not supplying, you can't blame, you can't blame Glenda for that.
Well, why not? If I was, if I was.
Well, if they were, if they were tall, a hundred and fifty people showing up, and he has to put in, well, it'd be in your stipulations that for so many people, you have to have so many porta potties.
But that's a new owner, he should, as a homeowner, and then, he should care about the entirety of his property, not just so to show.
Nobody did porta potties, so.
He, but he didn't, right, I know, I'm saying, like, you know, he didn't care, but if that was me, and I was having a bed and moves, so I, we spent lunch, and that's the one, it was six thirty-two people. And so, um, moved down, and at one time, was, uh, was as small as, and the porta potties, where all the corporations to go, you know? And, um, and then that's, uh, you know, the proper set, actually, for more people than that, because some of the buildings are no longer there. And if I were doing a bed like that there, uh, as an owner, I would wanna keep my property nice and clean, I mean, I would, hey, are you guys gonna have porta potties in there?
Did he clean, did he clean up, did he clean up the yard?
The yard was clean, except for in the woods, which abords my property, where there was the bathroom, so like all that toilet paper and stuff, and it was disgusting, I should not have had to deal with that. But I mean, like, all that lunch, it says, all the, see the whole chute, toilet paper, toilet paper, like, they're leaving answers from, nor would they have, so I had to.
Okay, so then, um, getting back to the noise control of the law, if it's okay with everyone here, I'll submit what we have to get it into the paper and to get the public notice and the hearing schedule. And then that gives us about a week or two to come up with any other things we may wanna change or add. So, I have some notes about the decibel level, distance, shooting, that type of thing, so I have some notes on here, but, um, well, really, I appreciate that you came. So, you guys have all heard it, do you vote, you know, we gotta vote on the resolution to introduce that local law and send this out to the paper, to the newspaper, so, on favor? Okay, now, the other one that we've already talked about was never introduced, we have to introduce the local law for the, um, moratorium. That's okay. Yeah, we're gonna have to pick a date, the resolution for it, you mean?
Well, this, this resolution had, had a life, right?
Well, we, we don't, we don't know when the public hearing will be held until we, we know when it's going in the paper, and five days after that, so.
Well, if, if you call up, you know.
So, if it goes in the paper tomorrow.
I can, I have them both, I have them ready.
Okay.
I can put it in as soon as the board's over, or you get it in, as soon as the meeting's over, I put it in, and it'll be there by Friday at three P M., if it's Wednesday.
And it has to be in the paper for five days, right?
Next Wednesday.
Tuesday, so we could have a meeting on Wednesday at six P M., we'll have it later, so more people could come.
Are we still putting it in the Post-Stop?
Yeah.
Is there only printing now Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Really?
Last year.
The Post-Stop is only printing a couple of days a week? When, right now?
I think right now, they're already doing four days, yeah, that's the best you can go, so. Everything's digital.
Yeah, everything's sort of digital.
I wonder if digital counts, though, for, for a public hearing.
We can announce it on the website, too, so everybody knows, you know? They don't read public, like, yet.
Yeah, we can put it in the Post-Star and the Sun. Yeah. Yeah. Cuz this has a post of public notice in the official newspaper of the town, and that's the Post-Star, but we have the option to put it in any of the papers that we want, so we can put it in, um. You wanna put the Post-Star and the Sun just to cover everything?
Yeah. When are you gonna have your public hearing?
We can put another protocol, too. They have a protocol, other than that.
Actually, I never submitted one to the Sun either.
I think it's everything.
Problem is the protocol, because it isn't given out up here, it's got to be once all.
Well, we could do the Post-Star and the Sun, and, and if we put it on the website, everyone would know. Two, three, four, five, so. Twenty-third.
Twenty-first.
Twenty, it has to be five days in the paper, right? If you put it in tomorrow, or even, cuz it counts at three P M., so it don't count for today, so if you put it in tomorrow, and they don't print it until Wednesday, what's this, what's the day that they take the paper? No, no, the Post-Star. Thursday?
Saturday, Saturday, I can't count Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, you can have a public hearing.
The twenty-seventh?
Not this, coming, we're following, right?
Yeah, it'd have to be the twenty-seventh.
Is that Tuesday?
Yeah. Does that work for you?
Yeah, the Tuesday will work for me.
Does it work for all of you, six P M. Tuesday?
So, Tuesday is the twenty-seventh?
Yep. Okay. Yep, six o'clock, it should be later, I think.
Oh, definitely. I don't know what the, what the, as long as you covered it in the Post-Star, if you're, you're okay, we can still put it in the Sun.
Yeah, with the noise control.
Yeah, I'd like it to be from. Yeah, but we're gonna do them at the same time, cuz they're related, so. Should be what?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven?
Well, seriously, people have a pool, and stuff, you got.
Most local people don't turn on the local people, so we have a lot of, right, and then call the police at eleven, because they will stop, and it's gonna be a disaster, it's two or three in the morning. You know, so, most locals don't turn each other in.
Uh, that's true.
They're not gonna roll in all three, these people come during the week, so it's a party all week long, all week.
Okay, so I need a second on the moratorium, um, notice.
If it went in on Wednesday, you can't count that, how about that? Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, not Sunday, then Monday, yeah, we didn't know.
Tuesday's Monday, Monday, so, okay. All right, so then, we go back to the moratorium on short-term rentals. And you introduced it, I just need a second. We already discussed it. I'm just gonna briefly read it, so you know what it says, I mean, maybe I have to pop it, I don't know, but. Whereas tourism is an important part of the local economy, including short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods. Whereas in recent years, the density and frequency of rentals of less than thirty days or short-term rentals in residential neighborhoods has increased due in large part to the web-based marketing tools such as Airbnb, vacation rental by owner, and the like. Whereas the increase in transient occupancy has had adverse impact on residential neighborhoods, subsequently generating excess noise, traffic, and trash. And whereas the Thurmentown Board is in the process of studying the issue in order to make recommendations on the best approach for the town, including conducting work sessions, other studies, and proposing a local law regarding the regulation of short-term rentals. It resolved that in order to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, it is in the best interest of the town to declare a temporary moratorium on short-term rentals. Be further resolved that beginning with the effective date of this local law, no new short-term rentals will be approved through, and I left that, right? Three months from the date of this ordinance, so figure it's gonna take a public hearing on the twenty-seventh, and then send it to the state, get it back, that might be, what, two weeks at least?
So, we're, we're doing two public hearings a day, okay.
Yeah. Um. So, I would guess, say, around September. So I would guess say around September, it'd probably be not till Sep- three months from the time. It'd probably be shorter. I don't think we're gonna need that much time. But just to cover ourselves, we can always shorten it. So how about if we just say um September fifteenth? I don't think we'll need that much time. And that gives us some time to work on rules.
So, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So, on the twenty-seventh, is that a major control panel?
The twenty-seventh is the public hearing. So we'll put the notice in the paper so everyone in town knows this is happening on that day at six o'clock. So more people can come if they want.
And voice their.
And voice their opinion and uh and then we'll vote on what the final verbiage will be. And then that will get sent to the state. Once they approve it and send it back, that's when it becomes a law. So it takes some time.
Right, and then that also gives you guys time to ponder and anybody who cares to listen, you know, the concerns that people have.
And they can do it at any time, but that's the public hearing, that's the legal time they can do it, but they call us anytime.
Can I just say one last thing?
Yeah.
So I want anybody to think here that I'm like, oh, I have mine, so nobody else can have it because I do this for a living and I have other rentals in the works. But I do it with a policy because I care about the integrity of this town. I care about my neighbors, you know? I don't, I don't think that we should have too many. I mean, you know, I'm only doing one more and it's quite off the grid because that's my favorite one to do.
Yeah.
And if you guys decide, hey, there's no one, then that's gonna affect me. And so this is my livelihood, it's how I raise my kids, so it doesn't, and none of this comes lightly to me either because I can see both sides.
Yeah.
But it is, it is my livelihood. I mean, I accept whatever happens, but I also would like to say this. If you live in here, it's really something to think about because it's not just like the noise issue, um, you know? If we increase the drunk guy, it's increasing the havoc, traffic and, you know, it's increasing taking resources from our town. And some are already, or it's like on a stall soon. I mean, I live here, I don't live away because this is how I want to look. Some people don't like having a drive-in stall street, you know? I mean, I just think that's, you know, there's a whole big picture to think about in in all of it. And it really does flow down, I think, follow the light.
So I just have a couple more things.
I I'm not sure what, how you put something in the Sun because you know how they they have, it only comes out once a week.
Oh, I see.
So if if that doesn't work out, we have that Facebook page now.
We should use that then. You can use that instead of the Sun. Yeah, okay, yeah.
And then the Facebook page, that, because I'm I'm just worried that we, it may not make it into the Sun, because I don't know.
And you're right, that is only like.
Yeah.
So we'll just do the Post-Star and the webpage and the Facebook. And I can even put it, I'll put it on the sign up front too. So we'll do that. Yeah, we have to vote on that. Thanks, Ed. Okay, so we have to vote on the moratorium on short-term rentals, public hearing. On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, next thing I wanted to let everyone know, we did get approved for the national red money to put LEDs in the whole building, including the basement and records room. And it's only gonna cost us two thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and ninety-two cents to do this entire building. Uh, I know about the furnace. I got till winter to get the furnace money up. The furnace is shot. We're gonna have to deal with that.
We need a new furnace. Different type of heating system. We do, we need something modern, other than that, one of our fire furnaces.
I also need to let people know July fourteenth is the payment deadline set for tax delinquency property owners in Morantown.
July fourteenth?
Yeah. And sales tax, well, that's been down so far for April. In May, it's down eleven percent, but it's not tourist season, I'm pretty sure it'll bounce back up. Another thing is I got our equalization rate for the tax assessments on our property and we're down to seventy-three point four-six. We are now the lowest in the county. Anything below ninety-five is ground for total reevaluation. That is not in our budget to do right now. It may need to be in our budget for next year. Not sure what it will cost, I'm gonna have to look into it. But we have a, it's a very low equalization rate, which means there are people that are not paying their fair share. You know, they're not being equally assessed at fair market value. So from what I've talked to, some people who've already done a revale, you know, some people go up, some go down, some stay the same. It all depends on where you're at currently. I do see it's a lot of it being driven by the high prices being paid for houses because there's towns like Coricon was a hundred, they're ninety-eight. Johnsburg just didn't revale, they were a hundred, now they're eighty-six. So it's just been a, it's just been dropping. Just to keep you informed about that. Pretty much, the only other thing I do have is we do need to go into executive session briefly and take long. So I have a motion here, go into executive session. And. Whereas the Thurman Town Board doesn't need to meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing proposed pending or current litigation. It resolved the town board, but already vote approves the executive session. We need to vote. Okay, we'll be right back.
They posted that same message to this place, so that's just the message they must carry all from from that to the.
Right, that's what I'm saying, just carry from the back to the back.
I don't see the looking, so I could find out anything on my reading stick out of Canada, but I didn't wanna give it any more energy, you know? It was just so grateful, so I really was so grateful. And then one was saying, oh, it wasn't bad, and the other one was posting pictures. They said there were no kids there, but then they were going out to post photos of kids and say, oh, this is, that's a military member, you know, having a party. Who would be Russian, you know?
I saw that, yeah.
That I was Russian and to have celebration.
Of memorial that it could be.
Yeah, for that as a military member, so try to interview that, and mostly, but even if they were that loud, I would've said something, you know? That was the issue.
Right, was it who was there?
Right, well, no, it was who was there too because of drugs or staring when people are in alternate state and they show up in your yard, like the girls are dancing.
But do you know that there were drugs there, or are you making that assumption? I'm just asking. I mean, did you actually see whatever it was, whether, you know, whatever realm of drug it was? Did you see it, or were you just making that assumption because of the way they act?
No, because it was advertised to bring the drugs in.
Okay, I I'm not so sure that that was a true affidavit. It, when you, when you go, when you went onto their site, they had that that same poster. But the part of the poster that had that yellow box around it that said about illicit drugs, if you went onto the, and I'm sure you did, onto the other person's, onto the coordinator's website, they had that same poster with kinda like a story background and no writing. So to me, that poster looked like it was photoshopped. And if you look at it closely, okay, take the time, margin, look at it closely, it looks like it was photoshopped. But I'm not saying that there weren't drugs there, okay? All I'm saying is that it looks like that that was photoshopped. And to be honest, why would you advertise that? Just, you know, away from, what happened? I mean, you're you're advertising something that you know you can get arrested for. Illegal, whether it's, whatever it is, if you're putting it out there, you you're kinda opening yourself up to getting arrested.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
So let's see, and and again, I'm not, I I sympathize with what you went for, I do. Um, I I'm just, I'm just wondering, you know, if there weren't there, or were they just, and it could've been just, could it have been just alcohol? Not that that says it better.
No, I don't.
So, I don't know.
I think there was alcohol there, that they were there in a drug alternate state, and the vineyard music helps to put you within an alternate state. And if you saw how they were behaving, I mean, you shake your head, two, two score, I was there, I would've said.
Right, but but you're, all I'm saying is you're making an assumption, that's all, that's all I'm asking. You're making an assumption, did you see that there were drugs there?
No, the best.
Okay, and and again, if you didn't see that there was alcohol, put it up there. That's all I'm saying, I just, I, they were definitely wrong. I mean, let me preface that, they were wrong purely.
I know, it's like.
But if, right, but just.
I've seen anybody doing drugs, so I didn't say that.
So is it, so is it fake? I'm just saying, so is it fake? It's just like grouping you and the rest of the D, D R D people.
I don't have like wasted energy or happen so with that. What do you think was wrong over the drugs involved there? It was very scary to be out in the open. It was scary for my twenty-year-old daughter, it was a problem. I don't know where you're going with this.
I'm only saying, you're making a point, you you made a statement, there were drugs there. All I'm saying is, are you sure? That's all. It's, I just don't think it's fair that you're grouping, there may be people there that were behaving. Sure, there were more people that definitely were not.
It wasn't like the whole thing, it was just overall, it was wrong.
So, absolutely, hence the, the permitting process, the noise ordinance, all that to keep it, that haven't, not adding any debt.
Right.
We should.
I think it's fair, I, I was there, I worked with police. But you were. Well, we just, we just, we just, we just, you know, but, you know, it was, it was something honest, you know, maybe they couldn't really. I think that they were, you know, this is a traveling event that people go to all the time from home to home. I think they just really know what they're doing, you know? And they, they really weren't, the people weren't really loud, once in a while, you know, we hear where, it was maybe people that were drinking all weekend. They were just treating, you know, probably fighting without any people, I mean, that's how like concerts and that's like that are. Which also led me to believe that, you know, also, they're probably just quietly, you know? I know the guy who was sitting in the wood over there was, you know, clearly had something, you know, someone was sitting in the road at six o'clock in the morning. One of our local police officers just driving work, they were just sitting in the middle of the road and they were like, oh, they just, they weren't really with it, you know, so. And nobody did it, just like they sit there. Well, you could stop, you know, say, hey, you know, on my way to work, it's not, I mean, you have to stop. It's not a good idea to sit in the middle of the road when they were clearly on another plan, you know? Just like all the girls over at the garage that I have on camera, if you view that, you can tell they're not present, you know? They're not present, they didn't, they were all taking drugs of some sort.
Cause it's private property.
Okay, you do, you do drugs on your private property.
It's a good problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think they just really know what they're doing. She's doing illegal drugs, it's affecting other people. And they were in the middle of the road, but it's not on a private property. Right, there's, there's like six of them sitting there just. I don't believe like, you know, other than the music that it'd be giving by the leeches, but because there's no ordinance, there was not anything that you could get it for and you couldn't get it for, you know? And then, and then you thought, maybe you can get it for, you can't get it for, until they actually do those things right there, you know? Like if they were sitting in the road and they had meth or whatever, I don't know, heroin or whether drugs are evil, and then they, you know, if they saw it, then they could've known something, but. So it was just a really odd. So, it was just a really odd situation all the way around. I'm just glad it was over and over and happens now. I would feel so bad if that happened to my property. I really would. I have actually witnessed this, this, I mean, to my property, it's really loud and loud. I was right there, right there. Now, it's really, really unfortunate and they really know where it was.
Good, no action taken. Just letting know that no action was taken up there. Anyway, we'll take action here. I think I remember this up there. Yep. Okay. I did get the AEDs done for nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, I'm in the middle of twenty-one. And then I have twenty-two, we're caught up and done. So, the point of me doing that is so that we could move ahead to either get grant funding or a loan to start building the highway garage. We already have the basic plan. We don't have the blueprints, but we have the plan already done. We had that done last year. The site that we selected is going to be up at the landfill. We're going to, I already did get board approval to run SLIP up there for phone and internet. Yep, and so, discussing with what's up there now, apparently it's better if we move the building for, for Ed and Charlie to the other side of the, where the garbage truck gets parked in that building. There's a reason, right?
The ground is kind of hard. It's not as stable. The burgundy ground where the building is now, it would be a better for building. There's a lot of stuff buried from rebuilding over from where the car was due to be armed. We want to move the transfer on that side of the.
Yeah. So, in doing that, I don't know if you're all, you've probably all been to the landfill, so you know that the building that they're in has no running water and no bathroom. So, one of the intentions moving forward would be to use the money that we received from the ARPA funding to put in a well and septic up there. And then for their building, rather than moving that small structure, we keep that over there for storage. And we're looking into this, like a two-car garage kit from Curtis Lumber because it's already pre-engineered. So, it's just a matter of pouring the cement slab, buying the kit and having it put up. It'd be a lot cheaper in the long run. So, I don't know if you want to go ahead with, but you're not really, are you ready to go ahead with this up there? Do you need time to soak it out? Okay. So, then the other goals were to move, to have a cement slab board for all of the Cubey Guard containers, those roll-off containers. So, they're all in a row. And then eventually post with a roof over them so that rain doesn't get into them because we end up paying by the ton. And if it's wet, it weighs a lot more. If it's frozen, it's, it's a problem. So, that's just our long-term goals for up there.
On the prefab, does that have the electrical wiring and plumbing and everything in it as well?
No, you just get the kit. You just get the kit. This building, it's not gonna be, it's just a frame of it. We're not gonna get the doors, like garage doors. It's gonna be their new building. Yeah, office, storage, meeting people. Yeah. Oh, yeah? Yes. That's, that's a small ten foot because. Like a modular. Oh, yes. I garden on, you got it? This is about ten thousand, but, you know, but that's with these doors, we're taking. Yeah. Get it already put together and then just bring it up. That's worth looking into. Oh, yeah, there, they have shut up there. I saw that, yeah. Okay. That's all I have. Do you guys have anything else? It's been a long, long meeting, but we got a lot accomplished, so it's good. Nobody? Keith? Still pending. Still pending. We're getting closer. Actually, I started Memorial Day because I was, I spent two hours with her in front of her property and I was like, what, there's, there's gotta be something I can do. We just gotta make it work for us, you know? Everybody's, every area is unique, you know? And then we'll work on our next local law, where banks that will close can't hold these properties for years while they decay. That's not right. They should have to push and get them sold. You know, there's another one up there on High Street. It's been there since, it's been empty since I came here, which was twenty, two thousand and ten. Yep, yep, it's up on the hill. It's a nice place. It's not on the main road like this. That's what it is. Yeah, I, I've looked at that place myself, yeah. Will that really, uh, hope, should we do it?